Especially after this project.
They don't understand it.
Talking about the jargon.
Oh, yeah.
I got a lot of, you know, because they have six ordinances. They're almost a thousand feet.
Lot of, lot of stuff. Well, it's long.
It's clearly amended.
Huh? It's clearly amended, no, and I don't have a problem with that.
I just don't think it should be done.
Well, it likely should not have.
Um, do you mind if we take A and B together and A, B, and C and E the other?
Get away with what? That's the tough part, yeah.
Do them as one item.
Something in here.
Is it an all or nothing? Like, they all have to be approved or not only get approved?
Yeah, there's no point.
Then, yes.
There's no point in amending the comp plan and not doing the legislative.
I, I don't disagree with you, but I'm just saying, if it's not an all or nothing, then no. If it is an all or nothing, then yes.
That's what staff is for.
If they say no to any one of these, then the rest they can't go.
They all fail.
Yeah. Cause you kind of need, they kind of are.
Well, then, like, we can do them all together, all six of them.
No, so they can't do it, it's different items.
Just do it all together.
What are the major?
Just say, look, do you read the packet?
Well, that's why I made them item, I made them item of three and B and four and E.
So I gotta go.
Figured I could get away with.
Word for word.
We probably were the only one who had two and stuff, yeah.
Well, I know that.
You let me get away with.
And, uh.
Did he tell you that I nearly had a nervous breakdown the other day with, um, Ed Armstrong?
No.
Ed Armstrong called Mark, called the first, Katie called Jay.
Uh huh.
At like seven thirty in the morning, I got that one calling up there. Call him when he gets to the office, but then they're pulling him out. And get to the office, Jay's left me up to call me, but I called, no Jay, so whatever, I'll call back. In the meantime, Judy called, because I had called her after something about putting someone on board agenda.
Yeah. Whoever, whoever in charge.
Ed Armstrong called, I've messaged Mark. Know anything about it? And he's like, well, Jay knows about it. And I'm gonna be calling Jay, so then I'm gonna know about it.
Right.
They wanted to advance the annexation of the previous.
The new board.
So, as a result.
Why, who cares?
As a result. As a result. I am, it's a good thing you called him, because I would've gone up one side of him and down the other. It does not happen, there was absolutely no reason for that, it wouldn't even if he, I said, even if I wanted to, I can't put it on, so. March, because right now, I have so much, I, we have six ordinance on the next meeting. Are you gonna come to, wanna go through another ordinance on top of the six we got? Cause if I, when I gave them six ordinances, the board members are gonna freak out.
Yeah.
Okay, let's roll. I'm having, I'm having meetings on all this with the.
We have one where, when's the ordinance adopted?
Yep.
Standard building.
Yeah, that would, like.
We ready to roll with the chairman?
Uh, we ready upstairs? We're ready upstairs. Uh, good evening. This is the planning and zoning board for the city of Tarpon Springs. And it's February thirteenth, two thousand seventeen, seven P M. My name is Bill Vincent, I'm chairing the board tonight. We'll have a roll call, please.
Mister Vincent?
Here.
Mister Carr? Mister Parker?
Here.
Mister Geolosis? Miss St. Arnold?
Here.
Mister Seaman?
Here.
Mister Hasi? Miss Protos?
Thank you, we do have a quorum. And so we will proceed. Uh, I don't think we need the quasi judicial announcement. And swearing in the speakers tonight, since I think these are both legislative, all these are legislative matters that we have, is that correct?
That they are.
And so we'll skip that item number two on the agenda. We'll go to item number three. Uh, alternate temporary lodging facilities, densities, and. Well, it's misspelled, but I think it means intensities.
Oh, yeah, sorry, it's supposed to be intensities, apologize for that.
I must've skimmed over that.
Happens.
Um, and it's, there's a subpart A and B, and we'll go ahead and go to the staff report.
Yeah, I'm actually gonna take these together, even though they have individual staff reports, they really kind of go roll together. The comprehensive plan, um, piece of this is an update to the, um, future land use element. It's really the goals, objectives, and policies of that element that we're going to be amending. And then with the land development code, we're just adding in the section and adjusting, um, one of the land uses that's the most appropriate land use to adjust. So, that's really the meat and potatoes, they kind of roll together. What this stems from is, in the countywide rules when they were amended, they provided for an optional element, um, to be adopted, where we can actually adopt provisions into both of our comprehensive plan and our land development code that essentially allow us to tap, um, some densities for specifically motel, hotel, temporary lodging type facilities. As a result, that allows you to put more on a smaller site. That is a perfect situation for here in Tarpon, you have a lot of, um, developed sites that can benefit from this type of use, or this type of intensity, because they don't have, it's not a lot of land, it's a two acre parcel, or it's a three acre parcel, or it's a two and a half acre parcel. By providing for the higher densities and intensities for temporary lodgings, the hope is that we can provide, we can actually get a hotel into, um, Tarpon, into the Sponge Docks area, into the downtown area, one of these locations where it'll be more fruitful for tourists, and those are here. So that's really why we're going after this particular optional element that's in, um, the countywide rules. Essentially, basically what the countywide rule says, local government may utilize standard temporary density lodging intensity specific with each of the county plan, um, uh, map of categories that provide for such, or may, in an alternative, utilize all or any part of the temporary lodging facilities. We've chosen to take basically what they have on their temporary lodgings and adopt it into our code. In the future land use element, if you get into the first thing, there is a table. It's actually in the staff report as well. It's the second table in, and this basically tells you the plan categories in our comprehensive plan. The first one is the resort facilities medium, resort facilities high, which is a new category that I'm adding in. Um, CG, which is commercial general, CL, which is commercial limited, and then CR, which is commercial recreational uses. And then each one of these uses tells you, basically, if there's a size limitation and the densities that are allowed, the number of units per acre that are allowed for, and basically, that's the number of rooms per acre, I mean, think of it as a room, okay? A hundred and twenty-five, if you have three acres, that's a hundred and twenty-five rooms per acre. If you have a two acre site, that gets you to the, what a standard hotel density is, really, for most of the hotels that you stay in. Most of the small, smaller hotels, you're looking at two hundred to three hundred units. So that's a very common, these are very common in other places. So as a result, that's really what this is about. I've also added in, as I stated, a secondary land use for resort, this resort of facilities high. Essentially, right now, it just has the same criteria as the resorts facilities medium with a couple of different alterations on it. Essentially, how this works is people who want to utilize those resort facility type land uses will actually do a plan amendment, so they'll come before this board and before B O C to basically request an amendment to these land use categories so that they can then do this. They actually have to go through developer agreement to be negotiated coincidentally with their, um, uh, future land use element, and most likely the zoning element, zoning has to be altered as well. They will do those as one particular group of, of things, so you'll see a developer agreement to ask for these densities and whatever they wanna ask for, setbacks are negotiable under those, height restrictions are negotiable under those. All of that is set during that development agreement, okay? So, all of that stuff will come as part of that rezone, so that's how the intention is for this process to work. That's really the nuts and bolts of the land development code, or, sorry, the comp plan amendment. The land development code, which is the second application. I can get to it here. I might not have these together, that's my problem.
Section two, is that what you're talking about?
Well, it's, it's actually the, this one here that is actually, yeah, section two. Um, twenty-five oh nine is actually the land use for, um, your resort residential land use, this is the most appropriate land use for people to rezonate. If you go, you got number two, that's the one, the one you want, article two. This is the one that you just had said, is it article two, section two, that's the right one.
Okay.
If you get into, um, this is basically the resort residential category, I've made a few changes. Under our comp plan, you currently can go through a conditional use in this land use, if you have this land use. Now, there's no established places where this land use exists, so somebody would've rezoned into it. They can actually go through this, this, this section, and by conditional use, get a motel or hotel to the property. That allows for the board, and for this board, to develop standards. There's no real, like, height limitations, those type of things, that's all negotiated as part of that conditional use process. It's a little bit different for these hotel motels in this land use than in some of the other land uses that say, this is what the setback is, this is what the, um, height limitation is, that you have a little bit more flexibility here, you're looking at compatibility. With that, I wanna maintain that, because there are still densities, intensities allowed in all of your land use categories for transient accommodations, transient accommodations that fit hotel motels. If somebody doesn't wanna do a developer agreement, okay? If they come in, I don't wanna do those maximum densities, that's not what I want, I want a small type, um, boutique, uh, forty rooms, or something like that. A lot of those type of hotel motels can go into the future land use categories that they might already be in without doing amendments. So, I wanna preserve the opportunity for people not have to do amendments if they choose not to, but if they need to do those amendments to get those higher densities that they, that's provided here. So what you see is you see motel and hotel, and the first ones under permitted uses for densities, intensities, intensities for temporary lodging standards, subject to a developer agreement.
What page are you on?
I am on, it's the second page of ordinance, um, let me see what the ordinance is. Application seventeen oh five. I don't, I didn't put the ordinance, ordinance over two thousand seventeen oh four. It's the sec, it should be the second one in your packet, second application in your packet.
Oh, see?
Are you looking at the ordinance seventeen oh four?
I'm looking at the staff report ordinance, they're the same language. It really, it really, they're, basically what I did was took the language, put it into the staff report to make it easier for y'all.
But evidently, it's not, okay. Do you know where she is? Just on that first page. Alright, got it.
You are where I am.
Okay, I'm good.
No, this is future land.
Okay.
It's okay, it's fine, this is, trust me, this is okay, this is harder stuff than it looks, so, I get it. It's fine.
And it all looks the same.
I know, that's the problem, because they're very similar. They're very similar in. You got it, I just gotta get you there. Here it is, it's right there.
That's a sad.
No, this is part of it. You're okay, you're okay. We are all good.
I'm trying to find the fish, don't feel bad.
Nope, you got, it's right here. That's the first one.
Okay, thank you very much. Almost to the end.
Everybody else with me?
Awesome, thank you.
We're good, okay. So if you go to the second page of that, what I, whatever I got you guys to, what I'm talking about is under B and under C.
Permitted uses and.
Permitted uses versus conditional uses, and that's where the differentiation is. If you wanna go the standard densities, they're available for you, you can go that, you come through the conditional use process, it's a much easier process. If you choose not to do that, you'll have to rezone into this category anyway, either way. And then if they wanna use that developer agreement, they're welcome to do that, that essentially allows them to go as a permitted use. So, the developer agreement is going to provide the catalyst for them to negotiate, just like a, a conditional use would. A conditional use application lets you go back and forth a little bit to ask for, to ask for small deviations from standard, from standard practices. It lets you look at compatibility from the neighborhood, more so than, you know, other dens, or other categories where, say, you must have a setback of eight feet, or you must have a height of no more than forty-five feet. This is a more flexible, um, land use category, it allows a lot of that to be negotiated as part of the conditional use process. That same opportunity to negotiate has been reserved now under the permitted uses. Instead of the vehicle being a conditional use, the vehicle is a developer agreement. So that's really the difference in this land use amen, or this land, land development code section versus what was previously there. Along with that, if we go to the next one, is the, is the new section that was added seventy-five. This basically is a regurgitation somewhat of the requirements that are in the countywide rules, but the countywide rules require us to actually adopt them into our code. So that's essentially what you see here, these new sections are right out of the countywide rules that govern this process. So that we have the, the, the rules in place that we need to have in place when people wanna come in and do one of these developer agreements, this is what they have to meet. So that's really what the, the nuts and bolts of these, of this section for the land development code is. And with that, I'll answer any questions I can for you. Um, this is, I know it's very complicated, it, it seems simple, but it's not. Um, but basically, I'm looking for an affirmative, affirmative, uh, vote to move both the land development code and the comprehensive plan changes for the future land settlement forward.
Heather, could you explain a little bit about the process, um, the negotiation of the development agreements? Uh, who's responsible for doing that negotiation on behalf of the city? How's that normally carried out?
So, how the process normally works is first, somebody will come to the board of commissioners and ask to negotiate with your, the staff. And usually, the staff consists of planning and zoning, to a lesser degree, the building department as necessary, depending upon what's happening, and the attorney's office, those really are the team. We work in conjunction with the city manager to negotiate the fine details and have, we have our personal opinions, obviously, of things like height limitations, uh, set, appropriate setbacks, appropriate uses that may be allowed, um, in conjunction. The hotel might not be the only use there, there may be a restaurant added, there may be other uses, so we'll provide our input on those type of things. Then, once we've got an agreement that we're satisfied with from a staff's perspective, we'll then bring that application forward, this board hears it, and then it also goes to B O C for final approvals. It's very similar to most of our other projects, it's just they have an initial step where they have to go to the B O C to actually secure permission to, um, actually negotiate that document. So that's, that's how the process similarly works, it works very similar to site plan only. Instead of in a site plan situation, we're dealing with much more complex issues in a developer agreement. Lots of times concessions are provided by the applicant for transportation facilities. You might have concessions for, um, uh, infrastructure projects where we're getting more, more, they're providing more capacity than what we want so that they can move forward faster. You sometimes get public safety equipment as part of those, you get a whole different variety of concessions that are usually part of the analysis that goes into those, those developer agreements. It's very common for fire trucks per se, if you don't have a ladder truck, but you're putting up an eight story building, you obviously now need a ladder truck for those types of facilities, those types of equipment to be bought for or part of that project. So that's, that's really what happens, and it's, it's a much more negotiated, um, path than what our more traditional path is. It's like, here's the, the language of the land development code, you need to meet that, as long as you've met that, you go. Developer agreement, it's nuanced, you still need to meet the land development code, but there's, there is negotiation room for certain, for certain concessions that people provide for us.
Does the technical review committee have any input at that point in time, or is it just later?
Develop, normally in the development agreement, we'll actually take a lot of that stuff to, um, to the technical review team, just so they have an opportunity to see it. A lot of times, that's actually a staff, how you know where the issues are gonna lie. So we'll bring a project, when somebody comes and say, I wanna do a developer agreement here, they usually come in with more than just the application. They come in with a preliminary plan that shows us kind of what they wanna do, so that we can then go to places like T R C, and we start the process there. What are the departments that are really gonna be impacted, wh, where do we need to throw resources at this? So we'll put a team together during that negotiation process and communicate with all of our partners internal to the city to make sure everybody's satisfied with the end product that's going to the board.
Any other questions of the staff at this point in time?
So basically, what we're doing is we're just going and stepping to the county now?
Well, this is actually an optional element, we don't have to do this, we're choosing to do this because it's in our benefit to provide for these extra densities to try to get a hotel. We haven't had a lot of luck using the existing incentives that we have in the code, so this is a process by which to provide additional incentives in, into our land development code to kind of try to spark interest. And we have a couple of people who may be interested in using this, that are actually, that are actually, you know, coming to the community, working through Karen Lemons into my office, in the economic development side, um, who have an interest in doing this, but they're, they're, what they're telling us is we, the densities just aren't there with the lots that you have, the size of these properties that they're finding just aren't big enough to get under the regular, uh, regulations, a hotel the size that they need to make it profitable. You know, everything's gotta be profitable in, in order for it to be placed, so essentially, that's where you're, what you're dealing with.
When you allow for the increased density, uh, what about, uh, say, parking and traffic and, uh, the impact on traffic and parking?
All of that has to be worked out during the developer agreement, or there has to be language in place during that developer agreement for it to go, happen at site plan. See, we still do the same process, you still will see a site plan for that ultimate place, but the, the site plan must reflect what the developer agreement says, okay? The developer agreement says, these are the, these are the criteria under which you're, you're allowed to develop. They still have to come through site plan, and that means they still have to, um, provide for parking, they still have to provide for any kind of impacts on transportation. We're gonna actually be talking about how transportation concurrency is gonna be changing next. So there, this is why these kind of move together, because having both of these ordinances in place is gonna make it much easier from a staff's perspective to actually allow for development to move forward on roads that are what's called constrained, okay? Roads that may not have true road capacity, there's other facilities that are not gonna be provided under this process we're gonna talk about next. So these kind, that's why they're all together, because this really works in tandem with both of these types of applications. So, yeah, all of that, well, those still, those requirements are still there. Some of them will be, will be dealt with in the developer agreement if there's concern from the developer's perspective, uh, or concern on the planner, or the staff's perspective. We will include language in there, usually it's in the form of conditions, you must meet X in order to go, um, or you can only do this much, this much density unless you do X, Y, and Z, a lot of that is built into a developer agreement. But this board, and again, the board of commissioners is still gonna have control over the final say, even outside of developer agreement, because you control the site plan, and the site plan will be the last step in this process. Now, you may get them all together, the developer agreement may come the same night that the site plan comes to planning board, so that you see a unified project, sometimes you'll just see the developer agreement and the site plan will come later. There's any number of different options that can happen, but a lot of people really, when they were doing developer agreements, when they're at that point, they're already working on their plans, so they really wanna sequence everything together, so they get through the public hearing process and then get on to the development process.
That would make more sense to us as well.
It, it, it does make more sense, and. We kind of let, try to let the developers tell us where they wanna go, but at the same time, we also try to respect your time, and it makes much more sense from your time perspective to see everything all at once, so that you have a unified project and understand what the impact of document A is on the site plan, right? Those are the, that's your opportunity during, during the, that time where you're asking the staff questions to make sure that you're clear that whatever's in that developer agreement document A is also reflective on the site plan. And if it's not, why is it not reflected on the site plan? You need to have that opportunity, so that's why we try to run them side by side, but there are times that developers aren't ready to go with their site plan, they wanna start the process with their developer agreement, so that they, that they know that they're gonna get there. And sometimes you'll get developer agreements that will come and then come back for revisions, and then the site plan will come back. Those things happen from time to time, but you've had experiences with this, or, or board, the boards previous to you have with Lowe's, Mears Town Center has did the same thing, so you've had experiences that run the same way. The process will be the same, although every little process is a little bit different with these. It happens when you're doing basically contract negotiations with a developer agreement. They're, each one's a little bit different, but the sequence really should be the same, we really should be bringing site plans at the same time that we're getting those developer agreements, because then you see the whole package. And if there's some, you will have annexations sometimes involved, you will have, um, if somebody doesn't own all of the land, sometimes you'll have a land use amendment as part of that process. Here, you're gonna have a lot of land use amendments as part of that process, in order to tap those higher densities, they need to ask for the land use as well. Makes sense that the developer agreement and the land use go hand in hand along with the site plan. So everything would be, you know, you might have six, six different applications, but it's all one, one unit, really, it's one project. And there's different aspects of each of that project. Just like you see now, only you tend to see one or two elements, you might see more complicated projects as a result of this. But you're not gonna see many of them, because we've, again, you're, you're dealing with sites that are over two acres in size for the most part. We don't have a lot of that left. A, a lot of what you'll see is, and people end up doing land assembly to get to that, you know, to, that two acres, which is what's gonna make this work. One acre at a hundred and twenty, at a hundred and twenty-five units is even gonna be tough for a lot of these guys. They're, they need that second acre to, to make it work, um, to make it, to make it a usable property. So you're gonna see projects that are smaller size lots, but bigger in densities and intensities.
Are development agreements always recorded in official records of the county, or is that, uh, I, I know often they are.
I believe that they are, but I don't wanna say that they always are, because I don't know that they always are. You know, they're, they're all recorded here in, in town, but I don't know, do you know that, Erica, if there, I don't know if ours, our ordinance specifically requires it to be recorded.
Yeah, I don't know the, the specific ordinance, and it's by the community, so.
Like, a lot of times, if it's part of a site plan, that normally they do get recorded by the terms of the agreement, anyway. I don't know about the ordinance, but often the terms of the agreement are part.
And you get a lot of them too, that require restrictive covenants to be added to the property, so sometimes where the developer agreement might not be added, the restrictive covenants are required to be run with that property, because that's how you keep it in perpetuity with the property. So a lot of times, I know that that happens frequently in, in the county, in the county. Um, I, I would expect the same, something similar to happen with some of these, because these densities just need to be kept in order to keep all that property, you need to have that stuff, cause over time, regulations change. And I would assume that you would put that, that in some type of restrictive covenant.
Any other questions of the staff? Now, right now, we're considering just the.
A, A and B.
A P P seventeen oh four?
A and B, yes. Seventeen, you're, you're considering ordinance two thousand seventeen oh three and two thousand seventeen oh five, which are application. I know it's, they didn't, couldn't give me ordinance numbers to match the application. Get what I get.
These application numbers are different from these application numbers. Make a motion on.
These application number, these application number.
Okay, misplaced.
Should be the. So we're looking for a motion?
Do they miss out?
Yes, we're looking for a motion.
Um, I'll make a motion that we accept application number seventeen dash oh three, ordinance twenty-seven dash oh three, comprehensive plan text, and.
Should probably be oh four.
Application number, you want them separately, or?
Yeah, hold on for one minute for me.
Together, but there's a.
Yeah, we may have a typo. This.
First application on the staff report is seventeen oh four for ordinance number seven, two thousand seventeen dash oh three.
Okay, this should be oh four, yeah, this one should be oh four, this should be oh four and oh five, it's the first one.
It's the first one.
It's the first one on the, um.
Which is A. You're talking about A?
This should be.
A should be seventeen dash oh four for ordinance seventeen, two thousand seventeen dash oh three.
Correct.
An application number seventeen oh five.
No, oh four should be ordinance.
No.
No, alright, I got that wrong too.
It should be application oh four, oh five, cause look, the application numbers go five, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine.
I got you, five.
And then the ordinance numbers are behind.
Oh, four, okay.
Hold on, and this, and this is wrong too.
Which one?
This is oh four.
This is oh, four, yeah, this should be oh five and oh four. Okay, sorry, guys, I apologize, this is hard for me to keep track of two.
Okay, so let me see if I have it right. I'll make a motion that we accept application number seventeen dash oh four.
Correct.
Ordinance twenty seventeen dash oh four.
Oh three.
Oh, three, sorry.
That's okay.
Comprehensive plan text, and that we accept application number seventeen dash oh five.
Correct.
And ordinance twenty seventeen dash oh.
Four.
Four, land development code. Okay. As they stand.
Second. There's a motion and a second, uh, any discussion on the motion? Wait a minute, let me back, I forgot to ask for public input.
Oh, yeah.
But there wouldn't be any.
I'm sorry, that, we have about an empty room here.
Recognize that there is no public.
For the record. For the record.
Are there any comments from the public, uh, regarding, uh, this matter? Seeing none, we'll go forward with our motion that's been made, and any comments, uh, now on the motion in a second? By the board members?
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. St. Arnold?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Okay, those two applications have been passed.
Thank you.
Okay, and now, we will proceed, uh, with staff report on the, uh, next several applications regarding, uh, mobility management system changes in text to the comprehensive plan.
Okay, there is actually three different text amendments to the comp plan and one land development code, um, amendment. The three elements that we're gonna be update, or that we're gonna be looking at tonight are the intergovernmental coordination element, the transportation element, and the capital improvements element. God, I did really bad on this. Um, basically, what this is, is this is in response to the man, the mobility manager system developed and adopted by Forward Pinellas, which is formerly part of the MPO, and, um, the formulation of the MPO and PPC, which is the Pinellas County Planning Commission. They, um, updated, or created this land, this, um, update to their transportation concurrency system in response to, uh, changes under the Community Planning Act. We no longer have to measure level of service for trips. So as a result, under traffic concurrency, how we measure traffic concurrency is the number of trips a project is going to generate. We're no longer looking at things it, with that lens. As a result, we're looking at mobility from a all modes view. We're looking at transit. We're looking at bicycles. We're looking at pedestrian trips. We're looking at trips and what a project is gonna generate over a much larger lens. In this case, we're looking at the way you lo, move from one particular place to another, whether it be in a car, on a bus, on a bike, or by your own power, uh, walking. So as a result of that, we're looking to change the way we manage, um, concurrency. We're looking, and rather than just looking at traffic, we're gonna, all those modes. And how that's really gonna be envisioned is it's what we use the fee that's associated with these trips, that's under the transportation tr, impact fee program. So you, you pay a transportation impact fee every time you have new development. They wanna broaden the ability to use that fee to pay for all different modes of transportation. In order to do that, you have to have a comprehensive approach for, you have to have a synergy between your impact fee program and your level of service program. Right now, we're only looking at trips coming out of a car. We can't use our fees to pay for mobility. We can't use it to pay for sidewalks. We can't use it to pay for trails. We can't use it to pay for additional transit, buses, or any of that type of thing, right now, the way it stands in our code. So as a result of the county moving forward, we have chosen to move forward with them and look at this broader approach. Why this is good, you're dealing with a lot of the hotel sites that we kinda just talked about in the previous applications are in areas where there's a lot of walkability, where there's, might be the trail might be an option, might be there already, might be in the area. And we want to provide an opportunity for somebody to pay for some of the improvements to those facilities, rather than just saying, just give us money and we'll put it in a fund so we can someday hopefully build a road. That's not a really proactive approach, because someday may never come. And you may deal with what's called a backlog of transportation trips on your roadways forever. Because you can't, what's happened in planning and in transportation planning specifically, is people have realized you can't just build your way out of everything. Sometimes you need to take a different approach and provide for the opportunity for a development that might be a good development, instead of saying no to that development, 'cause there's not enough trips on a road, looking at a more holistic approach of all the different trips that are there. Why that benefits us is it means dealing with a, especially in Tarpon, a transit system that is like in its infancy, okay? You do not have a transit system here where people can get on the bus, go all around town on a circulator. You have the jolly trolley and you have the bus on nineteen. That is it. Over time, you can look at expanding that transit system if you have funds available. By opening up the transportation impact fee to look at transit, bikes, and pedestrian walkways, you are opening up an opportunity for you to take the funds that you're collecting from these projects and use it for a hu, much more, a much more variety of projects. That is a good thing, because we are not going to be able to build, we're not gonna be able to build another lane on Alt nineteen to take traffic. Nineteen, it's a possibility, because they've acquired so much right-of-way there, that they probably could build two more lanes and, and, and make that road work for another five, ten years, right? But it's still not gonna get us to where we need to be. It's not, we don't wanna say no to projects that are downtown and are in the areas where residents can drive to them, or, or walk to them, or bike to them, i- if they're a facility that we want. And I'll give you an example. Park facilities are really a common facility where you want multimodal options for people to be able to utilize it. It's awesome that we now have a kayak launch. You have another mode of transportation that hadn't been an available mode of transportation for people to come down from Pasco and literally go right out, go right down. And they have now a place that they can stop here in Tarpon Springs. Had we had a mo, multimodal fee that covered waterborne facilities, which I, this one doesn't quite meet that definition, but that may be coming, that may change soon too, okay? With the, the county is also looking at waterborne transportation. They have experimental projects going on. So we're expanding the modes of transportation even on, after this, okay? So as a result of, of all of that work that people have kinda put into this, we wanna capitalize on that market and provide for a different approach to kinda get us closer to that whole walkable community, which has been the impetus for your, for your, uh, your, your downtown renovation projects and all of your smart code that was established. The whole basis for that was to provide that walkable downtown. You have it. You wanna maintain it over time. The only way that's gonna work is if you have transportation for, you look at more than just building roads. You need to look at the sidewalk connections. You need to look at the crosswalk availability. You need to look at additional bike lanes that go out from here to say, maybe somewhere else. You need to look at all of that types of infrastructure, so that you maximize how people are moving, uh, moving through the city. And that's, it, it's not even moving through the city, it's ma, basically moving around the city that I worry about. We don't really worry about the through traffic, that they're just gonna be who they are. We're more concerned about how people are moving in the city who want to move within the city. That's really what the impetus for this is. Each one of these elements that I've talked about, intergovernmental coordination, needs to be amended, because there's several sections that we have to coordinate with FDOT on, and we have to coordinate with the county on. We need to take a different approach, so that's where, why that's being amended. The transportation section has some archaic language. Rodney, when he was here, did a great job creating this multimodal system here, but we needed to add to it when they went to this mobility management, um, impact fee, because he had a whole fee system in here that was different than the fee system that they're now using. Matter of fact, a lot of the county system was built off of kinda the work that he started here, which is really a neat, a neat project to have that, you know, start in your community and it kinda expanded out. Then the, the final element, the capital improvements, and the reason why that needs to be amended is there's some language in there that's just older language that just needed to be amended to clean up and allow for us to use the impact fee program for a more, you know, multiple use pro, process than just transportation. Then finally, we followed it up with, um, a revision of the concurrency management system that takes out the, basically takes out the old traffic concurrency system and adds in the mul, this mobility management system. You're basically replacing one for one, but you're providing a system that is far more broad-based in its approach and a much better, um, feasible process for you to make project work within your community. It's gonna allow communities like ours to ask for things like trail plans when a project comes in. If you're on the trail, how are you gonna help us use that trail to its thing? It's gonna allow for projects to look at bike lanes as an option on, on a roadway than more than, the more than just at, trying to add a lane. It's not gonna happen when we're out in the water, right? Out on the water, it's not gonna work to, and not that we're gonna have a lot of projects out there, but it's not gonna work to just add, um, road out there. Where are we gonna take, where are we gonna take the land from? It's coming from, it's coming from people if we're, or we're doing that. The cost of right-of-way is so much. It doesn't behoove a community to do something like that, where you may be able to work in with using a road diet or some, or some other, um, types of things, a bike lane right into the sys, the road that you already have. You may be able to integrate it that right into the system. Now, there are roads that you can't do that on, 'cause they're narrow here, but there are other roads that are wider that can seriously, could, it could benefit from that. And it provides for another mode of transportation, a safer mode of transportation in that same ri, right-of-way. So there are really some benefits here that we can really benefit from as a community, and it's a better approach for a community that really wants to have a walkable downtown area. And not just a downtown. You wanna have a walkable area where you can walk to some of those outer, um, residential areas without having to do, you know, go very far. Are you gonna get a transit system that's gonna run all the time around here? Probably not. It's probably never gonna happen, right, for, for this community based on the density that you have. But you may be able to make improvements over, over time to the system that you have, providing for a much better option for some of the people who are here who don't have the means to drive a car. They don't have a means to get that, you know? Things are changing in the transportation systems anyway. You have lots of things like Zipcar and these other, these other types of products coming, and Uber, Lyft. They are providing different types of options for folks that weren't, weren't around ten years ago, twenty years ago. But there are, a lot of those are just starting to get really popular and where we're now finding that regulation is necessary for, for a lot of these types of, uh, facilities. So this is just gonna offer us an opportunity on the development side to kinda capture some of the trends that we see happening here and really look at using the funds that we're bringing in for development to their best use. Right now, adding lanes to roads isn't gonna happen in Tarpon Springs. It's gonna be, it's really, there's not many roads that you can do it on. But adding bike lanes, or adding pedestrian walkways, or adding some of these other things, those are doable projects, and they're not gonna cost a lot, especially if you're looking at it on a holistic, on the citywide view, that this is what we wanna do. We come up with plans, put them in our comprehensive plan, and these people can pay towards those types of plans. They can pay towards pedestrian connectivity plan. They can pay towards a bike lane plan that makes sense. They can pay towards those things. So as a result, it's gonna allow us a little bit more flexibility with a little bit of time spent on staff's behalf getting these plans together, um, to allow for a much better connection to our community. And that's really the best, that's one of the best things that we could provide from a staff's perspective to developers, because people, the end user who comes here that's either a tourist or a resident is gonna benefit much more from ro, from bike trails and pedestrian walkways than they are from building another road that, so people going to Pasco County are going through to the next community who are just passing through, just so they can get there five minutes faster. It, it's not, building roads is not something that most communities truly benefit from. What, who benefits from those are those people who are passing through your community. So with that, I can answer any questions you have. I just don't wanna go too far into detail unless you really have questions on that, 'cause it gets kinda tedious.
I like the idea of being able to use it for the bicycle trails. I know, uh, when I was on the commission, uh, thirty years ago, uh, we were really concerned about, you know, the bicycle traffic around the bayous. And of course, most of us here all ride around those roads all the time. And you see a lot of bicyclists, and, um, of course, a lot of walkers. There are some sidewalks, I don't know if they're continuous, but, uh, um, that's certainly increasing, I, I think, and we really need to do something to safely allow people to use bicycles. 'Cause around the bayous, it's very, uh, you take your life in your own hands, basically, when you ride a bicycle along that. The trail's great, but, uh, we need some, uh, bis, safe bicycle trails around the city.
Yeah, you definitely, you definitely, uh, Alt nineteen would definitely benefit north of the city from the sponge docks north on having a bike trail, a bike lane specifically, because right, right now, that's a very dangerous area to be riding your bike. People are not paying attention for you.
Is the, uh, entire funding for this gonna be done through impact fees?
Well, there, there's the opportunity, once you build things into your plan, there's the opportunity for you to have those projects work through your, through your budgeting process, through other funding sources. But the majority of the im, of impact fees will pay for the improvements that you see, because developers are gonna pay those fees in order for them to go. So as a result, over time, it'll provide for those types of projects. But you have to put the planning in place for where you want things to happen, you know? You have to have a transit element that talks about what your future transit's gonna be twenty years out, probably more than forty years out here, because you, you're looking at a much bigger pot that you need the money to make these circulators and things happen than what we have now currently. You know, the next ten years isn't gonna be enough to get you a transit circulator. Forty years, it's, it's possible. You may be able to pay for it over that time with development that you're getting. But most of your development here is redevelopment, so the prod, the actual impact that they're gonna have is a much smaller impact than say, in greenfields like up in Pasco areas where there's lots of land, they're gonna have a higher, a higher yield with greenfield developments. They're gonna get more impact fees faster there than you're gonna get it. But over time, you can build those up, and you can pay for some of these projects. And a lot of times, you have to break the bigger projects up into smaller sub projects to make it happen. And that's the type of thing that we'll be looking for to do in the capital improvements program. Over time, we're gonna have to rebuild that capital improvements program to kinda work with this new system on how we can kinda break these projects up into smaller pieces, where we may be able to fund them over a five-year cycle, over a ten-year cycle. Some projects it'll work with, and some, you'll have to get another funding source. You'll, you, you may use penny money, you may use some, some other source, half-sent sales tax. Any number of other sources may be available for some of these projects. And there may be state grants, there may be federal grants out there, you know, over time, those things happen too. So yes and no is the answer to that. Yes, it's gonna be mostly for the impact fee program that's gonna fund majority of this, but there will be opportunities for other funding sources to be used.
All right.
How does this affect, or does this affect, uh, the process and the expense related to impact fees? If, say, a developer brings you a project, is the process now gonna become somewhat different? And is the cost related to impact fees gonna be changed by this? Or, or do the fees remain the same at this point?
The fees will remain the same based on the county's schedule, because again, we're, we're signatory on to the, the county's, uh, program at this particular point in time. We don't have our own impact fee program. We're part of that larger program. So the, the fees themselves will stay the same. What will change is the types of analysis that we're gonna get from developers for the types of projects that you're gonna see coming forward over time. At first, people are gonna still wanna use trip generation as a thing, so there's gonna be some education that'll go on from my department um, on, on the types of things that we're looking for. We're looking for you to, you to tell us what your impact is across all modes. I wanna know how it's gonna impact the, the transit system that we have here, as limited as it may be. How's it affecting the, the use of bikes in the area? And then any of the improvements that they think that they want to, or would like to advance to, those are the types of things they're gonna tell us. They're gonna say, well, we think we might need a bike lane here. Then we're gonna say, okay, if it's a feasible project that we have in the capital improvements program, they may be able to just pay us money to go do it. Um, if it's something that we don't actually have in our plan, if, but it's something we think that we might want in our plan, it's something that we can take that impact fee money for them and then put it into our plan as a placeholder for this is the project that we wanna do. Okay, so there's a, there's a, there's a give and take that'll be a little bit different, but the same theories are gonna be there. They're gonna propose projects, and we're going to tell them what those projects are gonna cost from, from a, a cities, from the city, from the city's, uh, viewpoint. And then we're going to negotiate a little bit to decide what's gonna be the best project, 'cause they may have several different projects that come out of that, and we're gonna look for the one that's gonna give us the most bang for the buck. And a lot of times, it's gonna be based on what's in our capital improvements program. It's gonna require us to work a little bit, think a little bit more outside the box than we probably have in the short term. But you have great bones in your comp plan for this, this, for this system, because Rodney was already thinking about this when he was here. He was already thinking about multimodes and how multimodes are gonna work throughout this city. So as a result, we're gonna have to make some changes to the comp plan over time with the types of projects we get in here, but we're gonna end up getting a better system than what we had before, where we were just worried about how we're gonna build a road to get us out, you know, get us to the next place. So the answer to that is, yes, it's, the impact fees will not change, but the process will change, and how we, how we work with the developers is gonna change. We're gonna provide them a little bit more flexibility than they've had in the past. In the past, they've just used a formula, and out pops the formula number, and that number's, depending upon what that number is, depends on what they, what they're gonna give us. So some of that's going to change. It's going to be looked over a larger, a larger lens. So as a result, it's gonna limit the amount of transportation fee that they're paying, but it's not, it's not going to be reducing the actual fee that we take in. We're gonna take in that fee. It's just gonna be broken up over different modes. It's not gonna be one particular mode that we're looking at. Now, we're gonna be looking at all of them. We're gonna take in that fee, it's just gonna be broken up over different modes, it's not gonna be one particular mode that we're looking at, now we're gonna be looking at all of them.
It's, I mean, it sounds like the flexibility is definitely a good thing, I think developers may need a little help in terms of a, a guide or something that staff puts together that would, would help direct them in the right direction so they don't waste a lot of time.
Well, we're gonna work with them, because like, what you're gonna see with that, with that previous process that we talked about, those developer agreements, it's gonna be a little bit more negotiated, because for a while, everyone's gonna have to get used to the new system and, and what we're doing. And we may put together a guide on the types of improvements that we're looking for in different areas. And all of that'll be based on your comp plan, we'll use your transit, your transportation element to determine the types of projects that we think are most feasible and where we wanna put those doll- those dollars and cents to. But again, that depends on where the project is in the geography of the city, there'll be projects in different places, there has to be.
Any other questions for staff? Are there any questions or comments from the audience, members of the public? Seeing none, the public portion of the meeting is closed, and we'll be open for a motion.
And I'm gonna make, I'll make the motion, but I'm gonna make a motion that includes A, B, C, and D, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we accept application number seventeen dash oh six, ordinance twenty seventeen dash oh five, comprehensive plan text amendment, and application number seventeen dash oh seven, ordinance twenty seventeen dash oh six, comprehensive plan text amendment. Application number seventeen dash ten, ordinance twenty seventeen dash oh eight, comprehensive plan text amendment, and application number seventeen dash oh eight, ordinance twenty seventeen dash oh seven, land development code amendment.
Motion by Ms. St. Arnold?
Second.
A second by Mr. Seaman? Any, uh, comments or discussion on the motion? We'll have a vote?
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Ms. St. Arnold?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Okay, item number four's been completed. Motion carried. Uh, that brings us to item number five on our agenda, uh, staff comments?
I only have one comment, you're next, um, you will be definitely having a meeting on your, you'll be definitely having another meeting next month, um, and I have a minimum of three ordinances that will be related just to the land development code and the code of ordinances that'll be coming forward right now, I have those in, I don't know what else is coming, because the deadline for you guys is Friday.
What's, what's the date of that?
The date is, you would ask me that.
Well, because this one was moved up, so
Yeah, it's, it's March, I believe, March twentieth, which is what we would have been, normally would be meeting on the today, February twentieth, but that's President's Day, and I don't think you guys wanted to come on President's Day. As much as I would like to come be with you on President's Day, um, I don't think you wanna be here, so that's why we moved it up a, a week.
Okay.
But yeah, it'll be the twentieth of March.
March, okay.
And to my knowledge, you are in this, in this auditorium for the duration, unless I get told otherwise, you'll be in here.
Okay, do, do you want these packets back?
Nope, they're for you.
And I did have a brief, uh, just a clarification, Chairman Vincent, you had asked if the development agreements were recorded, um, and I just wanted to verify, so I double-checked with the, uh, the Florida statute, and yes, once the city has entered into the development agreement, not during the negotiation process, but once the development agreement is executed by the developer and the, the local government, it is then recorded within fourteen days with the county clerk. And then any, um, amendments there too, um, would have to be recorded as well.
Thank you very much, I, I knew it was typical, I didn't know if it was required.
That one I didn't know.
Any other comments from staff? Ready for any bo- board comments? Hearing none? Consider a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion that we adjourn, it is seven fifty-three.
Posting up. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, happy Valentine's Day to everyone tomorrow.
Thank you, and you guys did fabulous, that was under an hour for six ordinances, that's pretty amazing, thank you so much.
Well, you explained it well, thank you.
I hope.
It didn't look like that when I read it.
I tried reading it.
I know, it's very confusing. It's boring, is what it is.
It's such a nice way.
If it wasn't boring, it would be easier.
I like the mobility, mostly because I've written like
So you're okay with my, you're okay with my, um Poor Patrick, that's what's still coming.